I'd like to open the Planning Commission meeting for this evening. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Johannes.
President.
Commissioner Riddick.
I am here.
Commissioner Gorn.
Here.
Vice Chair Gossett.
Here.
And Chair Hernandez.
I am present.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
Excellent. Okay. I think we're going to start with public comment. So if anybody has anything on the agenda that is not, anybody wants to speak on something that is not on the agenda, I will open it up for public comment. Not seeing any hands raised, not seeing anybody online raising their hand, I'm going to close public comment.
If I may.
Doug?
Just a quick introduction. Winter King, the city attorney who's normally sitting here, wasn't able to make it this week. So one of her partners from the same firm, Marlene Dalinger, will be sitting in tonight.
Welcome to the party.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
Thank you, Doug. So now we have minutes?
Yes, and I'd like, before we start with the minutes, that we would like to pull minutes 8:22 and 9:12. We have some things we need to just clarify with Commissioners and staff. We've fallen behind and we just need a few extra moments to just get some clarifications.
So where are we at? Are there any meetings?
So we would go ahead and approve 8:8 and 10:10, if we could. And I can help with that if, because there was lots of different.
A few people weren't present?
Yeah. There's a lot of different quorums of people. So the two that need to abstain would be Chair Hernandez and Johannes for August 8th.
So for 8:8, do any of my fellow Commissioners who were present and participating in the meeting have any comments or adjustments?
I do not.
Not seeing any, can I get a motion from one of, yes?
Can we wait one second?
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I move we approve the August 8 minutes.
Can I get a second?
Sure, a second.
Thank you.
Can I get a vote?
Yes. Commissioner Riddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes, please.
And Vice Chair Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez and Johannes will abstain.
And then our next set of meeting minutes?
Would be 10:10, and we had absent Commissioner Riddick and Commissioner Johannes. So I'm looking for a motion.
I do have a question on 10:10 that, I did watch the meeting and I read the minutes. I think there was a person, Paul Nagengaus, that actually did comment, doing public comment for comments that were not on the agenda. I think it was reflected in the minutes that he had commented on an agenda item. I'm not sure if that is correct or not.
That is correct. He has commented and emailed us and let us know that, and I have made that correction. Our agenda was a bit scrambled during the meeting, so we clarified, and I have put it in the correct place. So it will be moved from the item to general public comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Johannes. Are there any other comments or changes to the meeting minutes for those Commissioners who were present and in attendance?
Through the chair?
Please.
I noted somewhere in the minutes, I can't tell you exactly where, it's in the Q and A, when we talked about Escha, protecting Escha by having only one trail, and comparing it to Phase 1, and in the minutes it lists Phase 2. So I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. Do you have that, Bridgette?
Yeah. I can make that change, that's no problem. Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second?
Second, sure.
Thank you.
And we don't need a roll call vote since we're all present. Can I get a vote for everybody?
On the 10:10, we had Riddick and Johannes absent.
Right. So all who are present and who can vote on that. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Let's move on to the next item on our agenda. So 1A.
Through the chair, I'd like to ask, so are we approving August 22nd and we're not?
No, we're going to pull them if we could.
Yep.
Next meeting.
8:8, just to clarify, we have approved 8:8 and the 10:10 minutes.
Correct, yeah.
And August 22nd and September 12th have been, will be postponed.
Postponed to the next meeting, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. So, well, actually, the first thing we have before us is Planning Commission business. So we have an informational report on our stormwater program update.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission in public, Maz Bozregidia, Public Works Director and City Engineer. I am happy to be here tonight to provide an update on our stormwater program update. Okay. So tonight, we're here to provide an update on our progress to date, give a little bit of background on our efforts, and also want to introduce our geomorphologist team as well as our hydraulic team that's working on the systems within the city of Half Moon Bay, as well as provide a little bit of an outlook on next steps. So I talked really briefly about it, so I'll go through a little bit of background before we go into our introductions and introduce the rest of the team. So a little bit of background, the city of Half Moon Bay has been working on a stormwater master plan update of the Phase 1. We did a, the last update was in 2016, and that update looked more closely at the pipe networks of the city's infrastructure within the city of Half Moon Bay. It took another, a different type of approach with regards to watershed management, really, again, focused more on pipe networks and focused heavily on that with regards to hydraulics. And we've been looking at this differently, obviously, especially since the last storm, winter storms of 22, 23, with the amount of rainfall and the intensity that those storms brought, as well as other more recent events. It really, really should prove that we need to take another look, a different approach to looking at our management of stormwater impacts. And so a little bit of background on some of our current projects and efforts, we've got, had a couple of repair projects along the bluff, based on the storms, Seymour Ditch, Seymour Water Course, the outfall, as well as the Myrtle Outfall along the coastal trail. We have a couple of other projects as well in the pipeline on the capital side, but we're also looking at data collection. I think folks along the Pullman and Roosevelt Water Course had received right-of-entry requests from the city as we started looking at our impact, as we started looking at our surveying access needs to get to those watersheds and take a closer look at some of that, which we will go into more detail. We also have, we also do an annual maintenance project, maintenance work on our culverts and structures, catch basins throughout the city. This is an annual effort to remove any sediment and build up over the course of the rainy season and get it ready for the upcoming events, as well as our annual maintenance of our water courses. This is, this is a little bit different. We do, we are required to get fish and wildlife permits, and a lot of these water courses are the ditches that are actually adjacent to our streets. So this is not, the areas that I'm talking about with respect to our annual maintenance of these infrastructure are more related to roadside ditches and not so much some of the water courses that pass through private property or any of the ag water courses. And I did, and also, we've been, this has come up in other conversations, and I wanted to just provide a little bit of background on the county landfill, the old county landfill. We have been talking with the, with the Public Works Department at the county. We are looking at options and alternatives with regards to long-term solution, which really, at this point, is really looking at a clean closure and removal of all the, of the old landfill and restoration efforts. It's still very early level discussions, but we've been, we've been discussing it with them. The county has also a number of, they have some recommendations that they're working on with regards to some of their more recent inspections, and they, that's the route that they, they are looking towards as well, as far as the most, the alternative that would really address the impacts. So there'll be more to come on that as we move forward. And so a little bit, just going back a little bit more with regards to our system, the city has, as part of the 2016, we took, we took another look at breaking up our watersheds. And so overall, the city, the city drains, I would say over 3,000 acres of watersheds are, impact the city's infrastructure. We have, obviously, in a good amount of precipitation and rainfall that comes from the hillsides to the east of the city limits, and being between the, that higher elevation and our, and the ocean, a lot of that water does pass through our systems. We also have, you know, private ditches and channels in different areas with respect to what's being conveyed, and a lot of different moving parts and pieces to that. We have, you know, we have a Highway, Highway 1 that has gone through the middle of the city limit and basically created a berm, if you will, with respect to stormwater conveyance that was of historical nature prior to that, that infrastructure. And so this, this is part of what we're looking to update. You know, we have our watershed map, just as a, just informational, I wanted to share here, that we have about nine different watersheds that we've, we identified as part of that original effort. We are taking a closer look at some of the maps and information that's already out there. These watersheds may expand depending on the topography and drainage patterns, and so that'll, that's subject to be updated as we do our focused analysis on each of the watersheds. So with that, I'd like to introduce our, one of our firms, Schaff and Wheeler, to come in and provide a little bit of background, introduce themselves and provide a little bit of background on where they fit into this.
Yeah, thanks Maz. Good evening. Hello? Thanks Maz. Good evening. So I'll give a brief introduction to my experience. Robin will introduce herself, talk a little bit about Schaff and Wheeler, our relevant experience, and then a little bit about our approach to the proposed stormwater planning project that we have. So I'm Benjamin Schick. I'm a principal engineer at Schaff and Wheeler. I have over 20 years of experience dealing with flood control issues throughout Northern California. Schaff and Wheeler as a whole, we've been around for 40 years exclusively here in the Bay Area, mostly dealing with flood control and stormwater issues. We're a small business. We have five offices throughout Northern California, just over the hill in Santa Clara, San Francisco, Salinas, Santa Rosa, and Truckee. Robin?
Hello, my name is Robin Lee. I'm a senior project manager at Schaff and Wheeler. I have just shy of about 20 years in water resources, and I'm really focused on hydrology and hydraulics. So I've always really dealt with surface runoff, whether it's in a creek or it's in a pipe network system, lots of master planning and coming up with concept improvements. And that's kind of where Ben and I come together, because Ben's a lot on the design side and the constructability. So together, we kind of have the modeling, design team effort together.
Little bit about Schaff and Wheeler's experience, and specifically both relating to me and Robin's experience. We have a lot of experience here directly in San Mateo County. I'm not going to list off the channels that we've worked on, but several of them throughout the county. And then here even closer within Half Moon Bay, we've done focused studies on a few of the watersheds and channels within Half Moon Bay, including Frenchman's Creek, Kehodich, and Pillar Cito's Creek. There's a map there that shows our storm drain master planning experience in recent years. You can see there's dozens of them. It's kind of small there, but somewhat focused around the Bay Area. A good portion of our work is directly, you know, with storm drain master planning and helping the cities implement the proposed improvements within the master plans.
All right. So our approach and methodology of this sort of Phase 1, Phase 2 building off the previous study was, we took a look at the existing conditions of the system, and so we know where the issues are. And then this Phase 2 is to take a more focused look at the watershed as each individual watershed. So our 2016 study is very holistic. It discusses all nine watersheds together. And now we're kind of diving in into these water-based approach, because it's become very evident that the interactions between the pipes and the ditches and the channels, whether it's private, whether it's public, it's all intermingled, and it's very important that we study it in a sort of more smaller confined, but with all of the information. So we will be taking a look at what's called 2D modeling, which is a little bit more detailed. And instead of looking at a point in time flow, we'll be taking a hydrograph, so what's called an unsteady state modeling. So this allows us to come up with more detailed concepts for improvements and coming up with these adaptive approaches, because it's not just one pipe that needs to be upsized in some of these watersheds. It's a real more holistic sort of improvement approach, and it's not going to necessarily be in just one location. So we'll be working with not only the city, but then also private property owners and key stakeholders to make sure that all the inputs and the entire watershed is considered as a whole.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, I'd like to introduce our consultant, Waterways Consulting, Inc., Matt Weld is here, and I believe we have Dan Malman on Zoom.
Hey, thank you very much. Matt Weld, Principal Engineer at Waterways Consulting. I'm part of the two-person team. Dan Malman, as you mentioned, is not here to join us today, but he's the project manager and geomorphologist. Waterways is a small, local civil engineering firm that was founded with the idea of bringing the knowledge of geomorphology and partnering it with civil engineering, stormwater, and flood control projects. And our focus is environmental restoration of surface water environments, streams, channels, and wetlands. We work for all types of clients, cities, counties, Forest Service, local nonprofits, people like Trout Unlimited Nature Conservancy, managing their water resources concerns. So as was mentioned, a lot of your stormwater problems aren't just confined to the pipe network in the city, the city streets. It gets a little more complicated when you get out into the, I feel like I'm coming in and out here, I'm going to creep up on it a bit. It gets a little bit more complicated when you get into the natural channels. Some of your projects are where these, some of your concerns are where these channels are exiting over bluffs or going through private property, and there are constrictions that are outside of your control. So what we bring to the team is local experience, implementing site-specific restoration and stormwater controls. We are assisting the city and Schaff and Wheeler on an on-call basis to try to provide a geomorphic-based sort of comprehensive overview on all of these individual projects that need to be evaluated, eventually implemented, possibly by many consultants. So we'll bring some sort of continuity through the process. So again, we'll provide geomorphic assessments, evaluate implications of the stormwater actions, evaluate feasibility, cost, maintenance, maintenance concerns. I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I don't know if Dan's on the Zoom, if you want to make any comments.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I think Matt covered pretty well the background of Waterways and our role in the project. I guess I just introduced myself, you can't see me, but my background is as a geomorphologist. I've worked in scientific research and engineering consulting. And so, yeah, as Matt said, I think generally our, our role in this, in this project is to provide sort of high-level technical, technical support as needed on an on-call
Thank you, Dan. So looking forward, we've got, this was just kind of a, we wanted to do a brief introduction of our team and our approach. As I, as we mentioned, we are looking at a watershed-focused approach on really understanding the hydraulic balance, how the water course is impacted by different, by different uses in the different areas, the different soil conditions. So we're looking at it in a more detailed approach to better understand our patterns and impacts. And so ultimately, what that does is support partnerships with private and public stakeholders. Again, this, when we have stormwater management through multiple parcels, private ownership, you know, state right-of-way, it's, it's going to take a number of stakeholders to get some of these projects through and approved and, and supported. And so we're going to continue seeking those partnerships and to be able to address our stormwater management needs. And then part of that is also seeking funding opportunities. You know, for example, looking at private-public partnerships where we could increase, you know, potentially increase the stormwater retention of a business where it would also be able to support, you know, flood resiliency for a neighborhood, for example. Or look at, you know, utilizing some of the state right-of-way for retention, if feasible. So those are some of the things that we really need to continue seeing, looking at and identifying as potential alternatives. And then, you know, based on all that, obviously, we'd look at updating our policies, our programs, and really looking at our best practices based on the needs of each of those watersheds. So it's, it's, I guess the big, the big takeaway is there is no cookie cutter approach to dealing with our needs. It's really about understanding how each watershed works, how they interact with each other, and finding solutions to be able to come up with, finding solutions and alternatives and options to be able to manage not just the flooding concerns, but also erosion and sediment transport and all the other things that come along with managing of a stormwater watershed. So with that, we will end our presentation, and we're available and happy to take comments and questions. Thank you.
Do any of my Commissioners, yes, Commissioner Riddick?
Thank you, Chair Hernandez. Thank you for this, Maz. I'm curious, you didn't speak to it, but on your first slide is mentioned the CCTV project?
Yes.
I wonder what that is?
So I'm happy to share. So I mean, there's a lot of different efforts going on. So we do have, CCTV is short for closed circuit television, and so it's a method of doing pipe condition assessments. So there are a network of pipes of our storm drain system that we are actually CCTV-ing as part of our efforts to understand the condition and assess whether, and take that information as part of our larger assessment. It's also another requirement as part of our total, total maximum daily load for Venice Beach. So again, it's a, it's an effort that was born out of a regional water quality control board requirement, but it's also great information for us to utilize as part of our long-term master planning.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Gossett?
Thank you. I have some technical questions. Is that okay? Okay. I wanted to know, is it possible to increase the carrying capacity of our wetlands to prevent flooding and erosion of the bluff?
That's a good question. I don't know if Dan or Matt, if you have any thoughts on?
Absolutely. From an engineering perspective, there appear to be opportunities to capture and detain some water to reduce peak flows at the bluff outfalls. Further analysis is going to be required to see if it's a significant reduction and whether that's really the issue. It could be also that it's just a very, some of those locations, those outfalls are geomorphically unstable, you know, they, they're not in their natural state, they've been realigned to places where a stream historically didn't fall over the bluff, for instance, at the landfills, I understand. In cases like that, there may be reducing peak flows, even to 50% of what they are right now might not make a big difference. So that takes further study, but it's something that we're actually, Waterways is working with the Resource Conservation District, actually, to start to look at some of those questions.
Since, can you stay? Because maybe you'll answer this question. So I noticed that some of our outfalls, the water hits the sides of the bluff, which are soft and susceptible to eroding. Is there anything that's going to be done to protect the coastal bluff from the velocity of water coming through the outfalls?
I think that question would have to be answered on a case-by-case basis, and I know that some of them are being evaluated right now. I'd probably have to return that to Maz.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I think there's, there's, I mean, we have efforts, for example, the Myrtle Outfall, where we have a pipe with rock dissipation as part of that repair. And so there's, there's definitely going to be areas where we can consider it, but getting that stormwater down, the bluff elevation and at a discharge point, I think that's going to be critical. So we'll have to continue looking at those alternatives.
And since you, we're talking about Myrtle, that's exactly what I wanted to ask, because I noticed the riprap that was installed below it, but if that falls down further onto the beach, is it really going to do what it was supposed to do in terms of protecting the bluff from collapsing?
I think the energy dissipation is obviously critical and important, but yes, I think we have, we'll have to take a look at it on a larger, take a closer look at it to see what, what other alternatives we have to try to reduce that energy.
All right, let me finish. Okay, and the other question I have on that is, we have the bluff that has a straight-line ditch going all the way to the culvert. Is there any way to create a meandering type of conveyance for that water to slow the energy before it even hits the culvert and restore it to like a, more of a, like a riparian type buffer or using green infrastructure to reduce the velocity of water to protect the bluff?
Certainly, that is a possibility, although I will just state that a lot, not all of that is public land, there are private properties. But absolutely, that there is, that is an alternative with respect to increasing our capacity of the, of the channels themselves, as well as that reduction in velocity.
I'm a little confused by what you just said, because we just approved a CDP for wave crest that goes- because we just approved a CDP for wave crest that goes through private property to allow public trails. So I don't understand why we wouldn't be able to use that same bluff to protect, to create a meandering type of corridor to protect the bluff from collapsing.
I, if I was speaking more in terms of Myrtle, because I know that there's quite a bit of private property, private lands through that area west of Railroad, so. But again, we can take a closer look at the areas and, and that, that is absolutely part of, part of our, our thoughts and, and, you know, it's, it's in the, it's in the toolbox.
Thank you.
I'd like to just jump in for a second and build on Commissioner Gossett's point more generally. Are you looking at all of the outflow locations where creeks are today as part of this project that would fall within the city of Half Moon Bay?
We, we, we will, because it's going to be looking at the total watershed. So we're looking at where the, where the stormwater starts and where it starts entering, even outside of our city limits, with some of the mapping and information that we're looking at, and then all the way to the outfall location. That's going to be part of the, the full watershed approach. I feel like that's, I don't know if there's anything else you always want to add on that, but, yeah.
And as a guiding principle for this project, are you putting more heavy weight on green infrastructure, like wetlands to absorb the water? Or are you putting more of an emphasis on hard infrastructure for this project? As a guiding principle?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think being as part of, being, you know, being in the coastal zone and following our land use plan, I think that'll be a critical piece to this. I think where, wherever there's opportunity for restoration of wetlands and opportunity to increase that is certainly going to be on a higher priority. But there's also areas that we could potentially look at, the hard infrastructure, such as our outfall locations. And some of those may be more appropriate to have a little bit more of an engineered approach. But again, it's, it's, nothing is set in stone.
Okay, I'm going to ask my other commissioners, Commissioner Corn.
So, first of all, really happy you're spending the time and attention on this, obviously. So, and, and the first step is study, of course, got to figure out. But, but do you have a rough timeline of when we can sort of start acting, since we're about to have another rainy season? We're going to get a lot of information from that rainy season, but then we need to act. So, rough, rough idea?
It's, it's hard to say. I think we're, right now, we're really focusing on finalizing our analysis of Roosevelt and Naples areas. And then the, there are a couple of other watersheds, the Seymour and Keigho and Pillar Cidos. So we're, we're going to be looking at all of these as soon as we possibly can. I know that a lot of, a lot of, a lot of folks, private-public, would love for, for immediate action. And I think there are some potential areas where we could do some smaller projects sooner than later and address some of our critical needs. But there's also going to be areas where we're going to need partnerships. We need, we're going to need approvals and, and the ability to work with some of our neighbors to be able to get some of that, some of those other pieces completed. So I would say we're, you know, as far as timeline, we're probably outside of our, of our construction season for this rainy season, unfortunately, but I'm hoping that we can start looking at our near-term improvements sometime in the spring of 2024.
And that says it, that kind of leads to my, my other one. What I'm wondering about is, sort of have you identified priorities? And sort of the low-hanging fruit, like which, which areas are you going to focus on first? I'm aware that a couple of areas are really problematic, particularly with private land. But sort of where, do you have an idea about where to start?
As far as the different watersheds, yes. So yeah, based on what we saw with the last rain events, as well as resident inquiries and information, that was part of the rationale for selecting Roosevelt and Naples to be a higher priority. We obviously have some erosion concerns and, and a lot, a larger effort with regards to Seymour water course. So that's another, you know, another one that we've highlighted as a higher priority. And I think Pillar Cidos and Keigho and Frenchman are not too far behind those.
That's everything.
No, I mean, it's, it's a lot. It really is. And a lot of these areas, they do interact with each other. And again, you know, as far as stormwater is concerned, unfortunately, it's one of the, it's considered a utility, for lack of a better term. But it, it doesn't come with any, you know, any funding. And so, you know, that's going to be, that's going to be a really important part to this, is how do we fund some of these improvements? And as we start identifying the, the areas of need, the projects that would be supportive to our long-term goals, I think that's going to be part of our discussion, is how do we prioritize those costs? Where, where does that funding come from? And how can we get these projects moving forward? Whether it's a restoration, whether it's an engineered approach, or a combination of the two.
Commissioner Joannus, and then I'm going to open it up for public comment.
So, sorry. Obviously, the places, you know, where the water goes along the, along the coast itself is the obvious question. But I also thought you might want to address Ox Mountain. Since the last rainy season, we had a washout of 92. So it's something that we haven't really talked about, and I know it's, it has its own issues, but maybe you want to address that one a little bit.
That's a, that's a good, that's a good question. No, absolutely, there was quite a bit of flows from, from that side, as well as with the, with overtopping of the banks at the Pillar Cidos Dam. And so, yeah, working with those partners is going to be critical. And that's part of our approach to our watershed, is looking at the, you know, that would be part of the Pillar Cidos Creek watershed. And so looking at those factors would be really beneficial to us, and we're going to be working with our partners to look at that.
Thank you.
Sorry, Commissioner Corn. Commissioner Joannus?
Thank you. I was just wondering, in the staff report, it mentions that, you know, the city is going towards a new stormwater management paradigm. What was the old paradigm and how is it shifting? What is the new paradigm?
I, I think, I think looking at the original, that Phase 1 Storm Drain Master Plan from 2016, you can take, you know, based on that information, the focus was really on the pipe networks. It was really on the engineered, on our engineered approach. And so that's the big difference in, in looking at this paradigm is how does that pipe network interact with the ditches, with the private water courses, public water courses, the highway system, and looking at it at a bigger, at a, at a more complete time, frame? I think that's what was missing, because we were focusing so much on the pipes and where there, that's, that's only one component of the bigger equation.
Okay, good. And I gathered that from what Robin had said. But I needed to ask that question, because I wanted to make clear that we had an old paradigm that was pipe networks. Now we're going to more incorporating the private ditches, the activity that's going on, on private property that's affecting what goes through those ditches, through the pipelines, and affects this western side of Highway 1. And that goes along the entire coast, because I know in the neighborhood where I live in, in the El Cezolain neighborhood, there is a lot of water convenience that's going through and affecting private property. And a lot of private property owners now are now creating their own little ditches and shoving drainage down to downstream properties. And I see that also happening from the east side of the highway with private property businesses that have, you know, activity, the activities that are going on there. And I was just wondering, I understand that the city has had challenges working with those private property businesses and trying to access their facilities to be able to address those conveyances that, of, of activities that are going on in those private areas. So I was wondering, how is the city and the team that it's collected to address those issues if those private property entities do not allow access to evaluate the activities that are going on there and the discharges from that? In addition to, I mean, I, I think it's easier to address the natural drainage from the watersheds. But how are we going to get that information from those private entities that are reluctant to give the city information? What is that process going to look like? How is the city and its consultants going to go about getting that information?
That's a good, that's also a great question. You know, it's, actually, since our last update to the council, we have been able to access some of those properties and, and with, with boots on the ground and start looking at some of those systems in a little bit more detail. I think that's going to be a really important component to this. And, you know, it's, it's hard to say. We've obviously reached out to some of the private residential property owners recently, with Pullman and Roosevelt. But we'll be doing the same thing more formally with our, with other, with other parties, whether it's a commercial or, or otherwise. And so there are, you know, there, there are other factors in play. There are other, you know, land use policies in play that we can start looking at. But I think, you know, if we get to that situation, I think that's a, that'll be an opportunity where we can look at our legal authority and start really taking, you know, more of a prominent course of action to just, to really take a closer look at some of those things with respect to the impacts that they cause downstream.
Okay, and I, I'm focused now in the terminology used as far as legal authority, because as a legal authority and legal responsibility, I'm assuming that the city does not have legal responsibility over those areas, but they do have the legal authority, meaning the police powers, to go up and try and get the information they need from those areas. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. The second, the third question I have is, there are a lot of residents and private commercial entities that have a lot of historical information and a lot of data that they've collected over the years. In fact, some have, from various places. I know in my neighborhood, I know in other neighborhoods, have hired their own hydraulics because of the flows that are coming through their properties. I know in our area, my area, that, that, a street beyond me, they have hired engineers and attorneys to look at what their neighbors are sending down towards their property. And drainage is, is something that the state of California has laws about. So I was wondering, how is the team going to go about collecting that data and information from all the entities that do, do have information that they can share and coordinate with the city's consultants? And how will that be used? What, what does that look like? Is there going, are there going to be interviews with the different neighborhoods? With the different, you know, person, people that have collected data? I know in Pullman, there's a lot of data that, that those neighborhoods have collected. I know in Keigho there is. I also know in my area that there are a lot of people that have collected that data. I know I haven't collected technical data, but I know what flows down the road when there's a, you know, a major storm and including potapotties and, you know, trash cans that actually flow down my street. You know, so I, you know, that kind of information historically that the neighborhood can share with your consultants would be helpful. And I'm wondering what that looks like and if there's any kind of data gathering that will come from the consultants to the local community.
Yeah, I, I can speak a little bit on that. I mean, we've, we have, the Public Works has received quite a bit of information from residents and businesses and developments. And so all of that information is going to be utilized as part of our analysis. We, we, we have, and there's different alternatives as far as how we can conduct additional conversations and get more input. I think part of this tonight was to really share our efforts and let the public know what we're trying to achieve. And we are absolutely interested to hear from folks about what they've seen. A lot of folks have shared that already, which we've provided to our consultants, and they're looking at it as part of their analysis. But certainly, if there's more, we would love to hear from folks. And we can, we'll, we'll take a closer look about establishing a easy, easy way for folks to connect with city staff and, and the consultants to be able to share that information. We haven't really, you know, whether it's interviews or neighborhood meetings, I mean, I think any of those are still on the table.
And one last question. My understanding is when Caltrans built Highway 1 way back when, they actually elevated the highway to ensure that the east side drainage would flow under the highway onto the private land, state lands, and private properties through ditches or sheet flow, or whatever it is. I'm, I'm assuming that Caltrans would be sharing or you would be seeking all that past historic information to come up with some kind of data set so that you, the consultant team can provide a synopsis or some kind of understanding of what needs to happen next? And whether it be, you know, flood planning it and letting it settle in pond, or whether it's conveying it through certain pipelines or infrastructure? I'm hoping that that historic information is going to go way back to when, pre the highway was built. So hopefully, those are my comments. So thanks.
I think, yeah, I think, again, any of the historical data, you know, looking at our old record drawings, ask, requesting that information from Caltrans, and also having Caltrans be a partner to coming up with the ultimate solutions and participating in that. Because, you know, the other piece is that they do have quite a bit of real estate that could be utilized for some underground storage potential. You know, that, that might be one of the alternatives that comes out of a watershed analysis. So, yeah, absolutely.
Very good questions. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Joe Farrell, followed by Vic Froelicher.
Good evening, everyone.
Could you speak into the microphone?
How about now? Is that better?
That's very good. And as a general rule, we have a three-minute limit, and we ask you to keep the comments pleasant, if you will. You can criticize and say what you will, but appropriate decorum.
Can you still hear me okay? Okay. Just by, I guess, as, as a background, I lived on the Pullman ditch for 29 years. So we have a, we have a lot of history with it. In fact, our house, I think, is the only one that a portion of our living room is, sits over where the Pullman ditch is. We bought the house as a spec house in 1993, 1994. The whole area around during 1994 was completely flooded. I mean, all of the, all of the fields and everything. And we had that happen a number of times. El Nino was like 97, it was a really bad year. And then I do remember in 2003, winter of 2003, when our neighbors across the street had just moved into the house, that their house was flooded by the, by the, by the water going over through nurse, from nurseryman's exchange. The, the mayor at the time, Mayor Mike, actually fell into the ditch and almost drowned. We've got a number of things. But during that time, because of our neighbors, the Devs' house was flooded. They started an action against this, against the city and nurseryman's exchange. And that started a thing, this is now 2004, where with the cooperation of Half Moon Bay and nurseryman's exchange, nurseryman's exchange started to pump the water up to settlement ponds and diverted the flow. And from there, we really, everything was manageable until just a few years ago. And we all put it together not too long ago and realized that it was when Rocket Farms acquired that property that they weren't doing any of the retention of the water. And you folks have seen videos that we provided for you from the water rushing down Rocket Farms and flowing with a very high velocity across our lands and through the agricultural ditch. And we've had a lot of flooding. So that brings me to this time now. And I was just looking the other day at articles, Washington Post, I think it was October 19th, "One of the most intense El Nino storms ever observed could be forming." The very next week, it was the New York Times. Next week after that, it was CNN, all saying, we're going to have potentially a super El Nino. So although I really appreciate the study that is being done, but being with Half Moon Bay, I do know that it takes a long time. We're looking for some pragmatic help with a sense of urgency immediately to make sure that something is done with Rocket Farms.
Thank you. Is that the three minutes or the three-minute warning? Could you just set it to three minutes and then, thanks?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyway, our, our ask is for the city of Half Moon Bay to act with a merchant, with a, with a level of deliberate, deliberate effort to get something done now to divert the water. And when I say now, it's, I realize, we're looking at El Nino coming in less than 90 days from now.
Thank you. We heard you.
If it's done because we're all getting flooded out and getting tired of it.
I heard you. Thank you. Vic Froeliker, followed by Dr. James Benjamin.
Joe really said it all, but I had my rainplan.com assess the water from Rocket Farms with all the impermeable surfaces. And they estimated, I can't believe the number, 92 million gallons of water annually that they're dumping on Miramar. You know, so, and I, I talked to them early on, and there's culverts over there that they can control and direct the water, which they haven't done in past years. And I mentioned to them that they ought to think about keeping more water on their side of the highway. And they said that all the people that had done this and knew how to work them have retired, and they don't know how to handle the water flow over there. So I really hope the city can look into that and do something with them, because we are really in danger with these next storms coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I please have those slides?
Dr. James Benjamin?
Thanks. Nobody calls me that. Thank you. That's very thoughtful of you. So while we're waiting for the slides to come up, I'll just say hello to some of the consultants and my colleagues here from many years ago, it seems like. I'm reaching out to you, let's see, I don't know if that's going to be legible. It's probably not going to be legible.
Can you guys show that?
It's going to be helpful if we can get that to where people can actually see it.
Also, it would be helpful if we could see the slides as well.
While we're, while we're waiting for that, I'll just say that I, my, I'm James Benjamin. I live at 400 Pillar Cedars Avenue in Half Moon Bay. And I have substantial experience with geomorphological problems. I lost confidence in the ability of the city to pursue this after some unpermitted development that took place in 2009. As you may know, the city was found to have knowingly and intentionally violated the Coastal Act with their project in that area. I had first contact with some of the consultant team in the mid 2015s, and I saw the 2015 report. I saw a proposal to address the culvert failure that had occurred in 2020. I was dissatisfied with the design approach and felt that I had no choice but to hire a geomorphologist. So I came to you tonight to share the other side of what a geomorphologist does so that it could set your expectations about what you should be able to get as a tool for assessing the project's compatibility with the hazards and the ge, the fluvial hydrological constraints of the local coastal program. I brought a few slides from the deck that Martin at Balance Geo has prepared that would, it will be part of the geological report that was omitted from the city's approval of coastal development permit for that project. It is now on appeal at the Coastal Commission, and I anticipate taking that forward when the geological report is complete. This first picture, and again, I apologize for the narrow boundaries, maybe you can, I'm not going to finish this in three minutes, so I'll stop any time you want. If you could just pan back so you can see the dotted line on the exterior. So there's a dotted line that shows the extent of his study, which is bounded by Pillar Cedars Creek and Frenchman's Creek. And then if you can go to the second slide, this is the same area. Right. And the colors are really telling you about the soils in this area. It's information from the USGS, California Geological Survey. And if you drill down to the picture in the lower right, you'll find, maybe the color's not well-produced, but that sort of pale yellow color represents highly erodible soils that, that we often see them referred to for liquefaction risk, but they are not the kind of places that you want to entrench soil. It's not a place that you want to drop fast-moving soil, sorry, fast-moving waters, because they will dissolve the banks. And that is what has happened. That did not manage to appear in the 2015 analysis of the Quixote Water Course, and I hope to help the team understand why and how it can be analyzed. If you back up, please, again on this slide, the blue lines in this are a channel network that is modeled on the US Coastal Survey topographic maps of the coast from the mid-19th century. It's 3D digital elevation modeling with erosion that shows us where the unidirectional channel flows are. It doesn't show the mesh network marsh swampy areas. It's just the unidirectional flow areas. And if you can go to the next slide, please. That same set of blue lines will appear on a map that is the 1941 map of Half Moon Bay's area. And if you study it closely when you have more time, you will see faint pale linear features that reflect the network of channels that have existed. And unlike some cities that are alluvial soil, Half Moon Bay still has substantial soil networks that exist, and they actually function. The subterranean network is holding a ton of water. And you can also see on this map the areas that were terraformed by farming in the early 1900s. So the channels are still there, and they're handling subterranean flows still, but the tops of them were just plowed over by the farmers. The water didn't care. It would just run through the soil, and it would be happy. I should emphasize that these channels are not entrenched channels like Pillar Cedars Creek or Frenchman's Creek. These are wide, shallow, vegetated areas that had relatively low flows, a 30th or 100th of what is happening in some of these channels today. And they were vegetated, so they were running far more slowly over a much larger area. They had a much lower impact. So what you can see in this picture is that that terraforming by the farming to divert water from where it was to where some farmer wanted it to be disrupted, this channel network to some extent. Next slide, please. Now you see the same channel network, only this time you're looking at the city current day. And you can see that there are subdivisions that are built right on top of that channel network. They're dammed effectively. And the water has been diverted into Hardscape and brought into areas that are hydrologically unable to maintain, that have increased the load in these areas by a factor of 30 or more, and the soils can't handle it. That's, you know, even now, you can see the areas that, you know, the faint lines of subterranean networks that are still possible, or you could if it was a larger slide. The good news is that there's a potential to recover the functions of those things and to create wetland spaces that will store that. But it's going to take a little bit of more careful work than what we have seen to date. What Martin has provided at Balance Geo is that work, and it's a model that you, planning commissioners, should study, and you should demand that level of clarity in the Pullman area, in the Roosevelt area, in the Seymour area, in the Arroyo Canada area, in every wetland, every stream in this town. You can get it. You should not settle for less. Next slide, please.
And I'm going to ask you to wrap up at this, after this.
Yeah, I can stop now if you like. This is just one final picture to show a 2005 survey that was performed by the Coastside Land Survey. It was procured by the city. The black lines are lines of topographic contour between 20 feet and about 25 feet and 18 feet, I think. And if you look closely, you'll see transects that are cut across it. We occupied those transects in 2022 with surveys that were performed by Kieran Wright, the surveyor that you guys have used at Shaft and Wheeler, and our own survey. And we found that the banks have widened despite the fact that that was a 2005 survey. 2005, 6, 7, 8 were very dry years. But between 2009, when that unvegetate, that devegetation took place in 2022, a bank of about, bank-to-bank width of about 20 feet is now over 30 feet. It has expanded dramatically. It threatens homes, not just mine, but 20 homes up Quixote. This is not a small problem. And the report will go to the Coastal Commission, so there's no action for you. The reason I'm bringing this to your attention is to help you understand how really good geomorphology can provide clarity of action and help you understand what the threats are. You should have that information in your pocket before you consider restoration projects so you know why they'll be successful. And when someone says a project has a de minimis effect or it didn't matter, you should be able to look at that and have them explain to you why it didn't.
Thank you, Jimmy. We got it.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask members of the public here, if anybody else would like to speak, even if you haven't filled out a green card, please step up to the lectern. And if you have a chance to fill out a green card afterward, I would greatly appreciate it. And those of you who are online in Zoom land, if you can raise your hand to let me know, I will call upon you at the appropriate time.
My name is Kim Powell, and my husband and I live on Pullman Avenue, and we live one house that's in between us and the creek. And the phrase "God willing and the creek don't rise" didn't mean anything to us until last year when our backyard was flooded and our entire street was flooded. A few years before, the eucalyptus forest that's at the end of our cul-de-sac has very shallow roots, as you know, and one of those 100-foot trees, thankfully and luckily, fell down the center of our street and not on one of our houses. So I'm really concerned when we had a flood of water going down our street, that that eucalyptus forest isn't going to go, I don't even know how to describe what could happen. I'm concerned about Rocket Farms, and I'm concerned about that creek. And I just wanted our concerns to be heard.
Thank you. And we've definitely heard you. I have a comment from one of the, yes, sir, please come up.
My name is John Hernandez. I live at 2912 Pullman Avenue, next to this creek that was described. And a year before the tree fell down the center of the street, a smaller, smaller tree fell on my home. And about five years ago, all this stuff started where the creek was overflowing, flowing and into the street, down to Roosevelt, down to the end of the block west, and just turned it Naples and went back into the creek and then went out to the ocean. I understand that finally, six years later, that the city has built us, put us on the capital improvement list for this year. And I noticed it is now sent 23 and 24. So that's why I was concerned whether you guys were, the city was going to get busy and installing the improvements on the bank to get it higher. And for the last five years, my wife signed us up for flood insurance. That's how concerned she was. I didn't argue with her. It was her peace of mind that was bothering her. And I'm getting ready to pay another flood insurance for next year. So again, I hope you guys are on schedule. I was hoping you'd get it done this year, but I noticed you have 23 and 24. So please, get it handled. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else in attendance here who would like to make a comment? Not seeing any hands. We're actually going to go back to Dan Malman from Waterway, so I'm going to go ahead and let him speak as part of public comment.
Hi, there. This is more of a question or a request than a, than a comment. I appreciated Dr. Benjamin's description of the work that, that is, the geomorphologist he's working with, who I know is, has done. I think, I think that a lot of the things that he said made, made, made perfect sense, and they repeat a lot of things that occur throughout the coast range on the, on bluffs, on coastal bluffs, especially ones that are being developed rapidly. So I, I would like to, I just, I just wanted to request to actually see the information that Martin Terso has collected. And it sounds like there's a report that's going to the Planning Commission, and I haven't been able to, to get ahold of that. And I understand, maybe, maybe it's not complete yet, but I just wanted to find out how I could get that information.
I'm sure city staff can get you in touch with Dr. Benjamin.
More information?
Okay.
Look, let's not do this question, but there's a little work to try to, what we can share appropriately. I think there may be some procedural questions. Doug or our city attorney, did you have any comments on that or about sharing information?
Is that fine?
Well, we think information's good. As was discussed, I believe, by Commissioner Johannes, the importance of getting information and data from a variety of sources, including professionals, commercial businesses, and citizens, that's part of the process we're going through. Now, whether or not Mr. Benjamin, for whatever reason, wants to share that data with us, that's his choice.
Fair enough. I'm going to come back to the Planning Commission for clarifying questions, and then we'll open it up for a discussion. Do you guys have any other clarifying questions? Commissioner Reddick?
No, I don't. I have a comment, but if you'd like me to wait on that, I will.
Yeah, I just want to see if anybody has any other clarifying questions. Commissioner Gossett?
I wanted to know if staff is also working with the California Department of Water Resources on their Flood Mar project.
We do work with the Department of Water Resources with respect to a lot of the mapping and work that they do. And so, yes, we do, and we will, we also will consult with them with respect to information that they may have that could be useful for us as well.
Commissioner Gore? Commissioner Johannes? Go ahead, Commissioner Gossett.
I guess I want to know, given the fact that El Nino is going to be here soon, potentially, that we may have some flooding, is there an opportunity to work with the Rocket Farms before the storms? And maybe that's a question for the attorney or, or Maz?
Let me take a stab at it. I think, yeah, I think we've, as I've mentioned, we've, we were able to access the site. We did start looking at some of their facilities, and I'm hopeful that we can continue that. And after tonight's comments, as well as what I've heard over the last couple of years, I'm hopeful that we can make some headway in the near term with them, with respect to their operations.
Commissioner Johannes?
What do you think the city can do at this point in time to protect from the upcoming What do you think the city can do at this point in time to protect from the upcoming storms, let's just say, the anticipated El Nino, to protect certain areas such as the area where the Pullman ditch goes through, especially through -- from the floods and Rocket Farms? What can be done at this point in time, temporary measure, apart from, you know, emergency CDPs at the Pullman ditch? What else can be done to protect those downstream properties from flooding, especially since we know those floodwaters are coming in from the Rocket Farms area? Is there anything that the city's looking at? Any alternatives, anything that the city's looking at now that can be done as a temporary measure? I mean, I know down the Delta area, they always do the levees, they always do sandbagging, they do something to divert water. Has the city looked at anything to protect from these upcoming storms?
I mean, one of the main things is making sure that our cul-de-sacs and channels are clear and free for flow, for flood protection long-term, although that will not address long-term sediment and erosion concerns. So it's kind of a -- it's a little bit of a tale of which one we're trying to mitigate in the short term. Because, you know, yes, you can sandbag the banks, but, you know, we can repair areas where it's failed, but if we're not addressing issues upstream, then we're just pushing the problem somewhere else. And so, it's a delicate balance. And as far as beyond our ongoing maintenance and making sure that we try to get the channels flowing during -- before those events, providing sandbags to residents and businesses that can utilize that as part of our storm preparation, those are some of the small things that we can do and that we are doing. But as far as, you know, we can, you know, if we, based on our information, based on what we hear from folks, if there's an emergency, obviously, we could act a little bit differently. But as far as the preparation, I think the most we can do is really try to get partners like, you know, our ag partners on the east side to take a closer look at their internal operations, as well as just having those sandbags available and prepared for those areas that we know are going to be impacted.
Do you need sandbags?
Please, please.
And so, that's why --
Please hold off.
And so, that's why we really -- it's going to be a lot of different little things that we can try to do, but we have to take care of the bigger issue, which is upstream retention, you know, and making sure that the water is traveling in a more natural pattern.
Right. But it's just something I was looking at for, like, in the immediate next three months or four months, you know, during the storm season, October 15th technically through April 15th technically, right? Because something could happen in between that time period, and we're not, you know -- so if there's things that the city can think about, maybe working with its consultants to help, I mean, there's probably other places that you can look at, the county. I know, you know, the state has some resources. NRCS, you know, can look at that as well. You know, just something to help in the meantime.
I hear your comments, and I think that's something definitely we can take a closer look at to see if there's anything that we could do. I just know that in Roosevelt and Pullman specifically, I think the upstream retention is going to be the critical piece. If it was sandbagging and that would have resulted, we would have absolutely done that already.
I have a few clarifying questions. First, I just want to address some of the comments. We know that your houses are under threat from water. And we've seen emergency work the city has done, and I don't think there's anybody at this dais who doesn't appreciate the fact that the paradigm we have in place has completely failed. There's no question of that. And I think, to go back to Commissioner Johannes's point, we have an obligation to protect the safety, health, and well-being of our citizens. I know you, Maz, take that seriously. I know you guys have been working really hard to react to a lot of the problems that are here. Two questions. The first one is, is there an agreement in place with the previous owner or the current owner of Rocket Farms about impounding water? Because I heard, this is the first time I've heard that there was an agreement in place, and the implication is that that agreement is not being honored, or that practice, whether or not it was a formal legal agreement, is no longer being complied with through -- I want to be respectful of one of the largest employers of town, but just sheer lack of desire to put effort into it, is what I heard. And they're not here to represent their position, but that's a pretty shocking thing. So is this news to you, or are you aware of this?
I will say that our staff went out during some of these investigations and received this information from the residents that were impacted at that point. And so recently, we've become aware of it, and so that is something that we're taking a closer look at as we speak.
Thank you. And you said you're also working with RCD as a partner?
Yeah, RCD is -- the Resource Conservation District has been a partner for us. We are looking at projects that we can tackle together. They recently submitted some grant applications for funding towards things such as the clean closure of the old county landfill. And so I'm hopeful to, you know, not just for the funding, but also the continuing collaboration.
Very good. I'd like to move -- do you have any other clarifying questions? Because do you guys have any discussion points you'd like to make? I have a couple of just discussion points, and I've already raised that, you know, we have an obligation for safety and the well-being of our community. The reality is that the conditions on the ground have changed, and we don't know all of the reasons why those conditions have changed. But I would encourage city staff, and I know you're working hard at this, to drop a short list of things that can be done in the immediate future to Commissioner Johannes's point. What can we do? And if there is a practice that could be met that was previously performed, if we can work with the owners of Rocket Farms to look at that pretty seriously, I think that would be a terrific improvement. And I would really like to see outreach about, hey, have you worked with a geomorphologist? Have you done studies? Do you have this? Let's see if we can get the public to share documents. Because I walked Pillar Cedos Creek the day after the flooding started, the beginning of the year, and it was a mess. And I can only imagine how much worse it's going to be. And I've been in Pullman Creek when it's flooding as well. I know how awful that area is, so this is a pretty serious issue. When do you expect to have the study completed?
That's a good question. I don't have that scheduled off the top of my head as far as the current watershed that we're looking at. I don't know, Ben, if you have any, if you can share a little bit on that.
I don't think we have a schedule set in place, but we're just gathering all the data now. We're just about to receive the survey data, which is going to aid in our analysis of the channel and the entire watershed. So we're hoping, you know, probably early next year, we'll have a draft report to the city that would address, you know, the existing conditions and also come up with some potential solutions.
Thank you. And I don't know what your involvement with the San Francisco -- Francisco Creek was, but having been a longtime resident of Palo Alto, it was a hot mess. The only thing I would say is I hope we can learn from that project and not repeat the mistakes. There were many mistakes that were made there over many, many years.
No, absolutely. Yeah, we always like to learn from mistakes, and our involvement was purely on the hydraulic side for that project. And, you know, so, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Johannes?
Yes, the San Francisco Dam came to mind, the -- one of the largest dam disasters in the state of California. So when I saw that, I thought, wow. So, yeah, I hope you guys can help with our situation here.
Or maybe remove it from your slide deck. Okay. I think that's it. There's no motion. Oh, you have another question? Go ahead.
No question. I just wanted to point out that on September 6, the California Coastal Commission gave a presentation on the El Nino coming up, and they also provided resource information for municipalities along the coast. So I just wanted to share that information in the event that it might be useful to everyone here. Thank you.
Okay, so Commissioner Riddick?
Yeah, one last comment. I wanted to thank Maz for the update on the county and the county's responsibility for the abandoned landfill north of Seymour Ditch. I guess we should be happy to hear that they are -- the county is focusing on closing that in the long run. I know what we have discussed recently, that that is a potential disaster waiting to happen out there with all of the stuff that is in that abandoned landfill. I know that the city will do everything possible to keep the county focused on that. Thank you for that.
Thank you again, Maz, for the report. There's no action from us, so I'm going to go ahead and close this item, unless you have anything that you need from us.
No, thank you for the opportunity to present our update, and we will be scheduling further updates as well as with the city council in the coming months. So appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. We're going to close this item. Before we move on to Item 1A on our public hearing, I'm going to take a five-minute recess for everyone, and we'll come back. Are we ready?
Thank you, Planning Commission, members of the public, and folks out in Zoom world and Facebook. Maz, we're getting here again with Public Works, the City of Half Moon Bay, here with Jonathan Wu, Assistant Engineer with the City of Half Moon Bay. And before we start, I just wanted to make a couple of comments with regards to this item before you tonight. Yes, we received a certain amount of comments from the general public as part of the posting of the agenda and the staff report. And what we want to have is a discussion specifically with regards to the Poplar Street on the east side of Highway 1, and just kind of walk through and discuss some of the concerns and issues that we have seen with regards to, with respect to what was originally approved. I will say, but I will also preface this with, we do have, you know, we do have a contract in place with what was already approved in the original CDP. So we want to have this discussion, but whether we move forward with the amendment or not is a -- it won't impact our schedule. We are still planning to move forward on the project and construction. And we do have it built in with the gravel and soft treatments on the parking shoulders, but we also requested an alternative for paving that section out. And so we just wanted to have this conversation to see if there's a consensus or not. And either way, we're happy to move forward with the project, whether it's with the original or with an amendment.
Thank you. Before we get started, I just want to make a comment. During the last hearing on this item, three of the commissioners had to take a poll to not participate, or a straw poll, to not participate because three of us were conflicted out of the original project and the original CDP. That no longer applies because one of the commissioners is not here, and the two of us for the project that's being discussed are not within 500 feet of the improvement, so there's no presumption of financial impact or personal impact. So I just wanted to call that out, because there's a little bit of history there. So I plan to participate, and Commissioner Riddick, I believe, plans to participate as well. And I've watched the meeting, previous meetings on this topic, and participated in almost all of the public hearings on this project as well.
Yeah, through the chair, the city attorney office has advised me that because we're talking about the project east of the highway, that there are no concerns about conflict of interest, as there were originally.
Thank you. Please, get started.
Good evening, everybody, commission, chair, everybody in attendance here. I'm Jonathan Wu, Assistant Engineer for the City of Half Moon Bay, and we're here to talk about the amendment for the Poplar, for the first phase of the Poplar Street Traffic Calming and Safety Project. For a little bit of an overview, we're going to talk about what we're bringing here for the recommendation, background of some community outreach that we performed before the initial approval, during, before the Planning Commission approval back in February of 2022, an overview of where the project is, the project location and the phasing, as well as our proposed amendment and reasons to why we are bringing this forward to you guys, as well as a question and answer portion right after that. So our recommendation, and as Maz discussed, this is solely specific for the east side of Highway 1 between Main Street and Railroad. And the project proposal is solely based on, or the amendment proposal, I apologize, is solely based on the paved parking lanes rather than the previously approved gravel parking lanes. And again, between Main Street and Highway 1. So we've done some extensive community outreach from kind of step one of this project back in 2018. And throughout the years, especially when we got the project approval back in February of 2022 through the Planning Commission, we've gone to multiple city council meetings as well as private, or private development, not private development, private property outreach as well, one-on-one meetings with property owners, some residents, as well as we've had an email address that allowed people to send us an email or an inquiry about the project and ask questions to see any input that they can provide for the project. So in February of 2022, through the city council, the meeting, we've talked about the deferred street agreements, and that was a little, that was kind of discussed a little bit in the February of 2022, Planning Commission meeting. And back in November 2022, the city council action update, we've provided that approval to go ahead and split the project into two phases due to funding shortfall. So like we were talking about a little bit before, Phase 1 being between Main Street to Highway 1, and Phase 2 being Highway 1 to Railroad Avenue. Back in September of 2023, the city council gone ahead and awarded the construction contract to Half Moon Bay Grading and Paving. And as Maz discussed earlier, this, we've provided two alternatives, one that was originally approved and one that we're kind of bringing to you as an amendment. So here's an overall map of the phasing from the project. I'm not going to say it again, but what the limits are, but this is just kind of a -- but what the limits are, but this is just kind of a visual representation of what I just mentioned. So this is the proposed amendment that we're bringing forward and the highlighted areas in green are those areas of interest that are the gravel parking areas in place. And what we're trying to bring forward is to replace, replace that with, excuse me, replace that with pavement parking or asphalt. With gravel parking, there will need to be some sort of levels of compaction to allow, you know, to ensure that it could support with vehicular loading. But with gravel, there are some, you know, potential of seepage, there's potential of percolation through the gravel. And, you know, with this stormwater kind of retaining and ponding within that area, it actually could potentially lead to rapid base failure, which could also lead to further failure of the asphalt as well, or the street section in addition to that. So this is another section of the street. We just kind of split into three separate slides. So the proposed amendment that we're bringing forward, where we have a few concerns that we wanted to bring forth. One of them were safety issues and, you know, with constant occurrences of vehicles traveling onto and off of gravel, there is a potential for gravel to kick and have the tire, you know, having tires, not having enough grip with gravel, there can be a potential for that to kick and fly. And if we have sidewalks, decomposed granite pathway there with, you know, with properties, of course, adjacent to it, there is a high potential that it could kick and fly towards a person that is walking there or towards a house. So that is one concern that we wanted to bring up. Another concern is regarding the maintenance costs and responsibilities.
I'm sorry, I was, we were having a sidebar here over a squeaky chair. The safety issue, you, could you repeat the safety issues that you called out?
Sure. So the...
No, I'm going to take a stab. Let me take a stab. So yeah, there's just a couple of concerns. It was just, there was concerns with the material being loose and being tracked off, as Jonathan mentioned. But also, there's the potential for, you know, trip and fall hazards as people getting in and out of their vehicles. So those are just some of the concerns that were on our minds that we wanted to bring forward as a discussion item.
So it's, you're not worried about bits of rocks flying up as a safety issue? You're really worried more about the trip and fall potential between the change in structure and the tracking of the materials onto the sidewalks and the roads? I just, we missed it and I want to make sure that I...
Totally understood. Yeah, no, it's, and I, so it's part of that as well. I mean, so yeah, there's the potential for the rocks to be spread out at higher velocities. There's that potential if a vehicle goes off the edge of the pathway. But yeah, there's, the majority, I think, would be more on the trip and fall aspect of it.
Thank you. Sorry. Sorry to interrupt your presentation.
No worries. So another concern that we wanted to bring up too is that the maintenance costs and responsibilities that can lead through this. So we kind of mentioned before that with stormwater percolating and stormwater ponding within those gravel areas, it could, it would lead to standing water within compacted base. And with that, it would lead to rapid base failure and, again, ultimate failure of the street over time in a rapid fashion. Another thing that we wanted to bring up too is that we, with our design, we ran through the calculations and we'll kind of run through this a little bit further on. And as you've all seen through the attachments, we provided enough and adequate amount of stormwater retention for at least a 10-year storm as required through the County of San Mateo Stormwater Pollution Prevention Program. Their guidelines provided this spreadsheet of calculations that allows us to input data of how much impervious and pervious surfaces that we will provide within our project. And it kind of, in a sense, spits out a calculation of how much stormwater, required stormwater capture or retention that we'll need to provide for that project. So this next slide, this is a typical detail of our bioretention planter strip throughout the entirety of the project. And this area, you could kind of see, I'm not too sure if you could see my cursor. No, you can't really see my cursor. But there is a kind of a vertical difference in the picture that you could see about 2 to 6 inches. So that allows that stormwater to pond and sit and over time as, you know, as the soil lets it percolate through to the bioretention soil over time and allows it to sit. So that's kind of like the main purpose for this bioretention area and planter strip throughout the entirety of the project. So I don't want to, oops, excuse me, sorry. I don't want to go through the entirety of those calculations through attachments. I believe it was four and five are the last two attachments. But this is just kind of a summary, side by side between each other. So on the gravel side, I've highlighted it in kind of an orange and the pavement side, I've kind of highlighted it in a grayer tone. So you could kind of see the numbers here of impervious versus pervious surfaces.
I'm sorry, I think I misheard you. The gravel is in orange and the pavement is in gray, correct?
Yes. I apologize if I mixed that up. But yes, so the gravel, the gravel calculation just includes the impervious surfaces of AC or asphalt concrete, concrete sidewalks, concrete curb and gutter. And then the pervious surfaces would include, of course, the gravel, decomposed granite pathway and the bioretention planter. And on the pavement side, it's just subtracting the gravel and turning that into impervious. So that's where the calculations kind of steer from. And where it says required capture volume in cubic feet, there's a difference of 250 cubic feet, which is kind of minimal to a point, or about 10% of that, the gravel calculation. It's a little, it's kind of minimal, it's a little minute. But over, over that, based off of what we've proposed as in a little over 5,000 square feet of bioretention planter, that kind of calculates up to a little over 9,000 cubic feet, which is well over about three, three times the amount of what we're, what we're required to do. And then one, one other thing we wanted to talk about was infiltration rates. And there's two ways of really calculating the stormwater runoff based off of pervious or impervious surfaces. And one of them is the rational method, which uses a runoff coefficient C, or that's kind of the term or the symbol that they use for the rational method. And the other method is a little bit more complex calculation, is a term, the SCS method, which uses a curve number or a few graphs as well. Both of these values are pretty much used to determine and understand the type of permeability of the material. So a higher number for each, that basically it means the less permeability that material offers. So this graph or this table here to the right of your screen is taken directly from the Iowa DOT or Department of Transportation Design Bureau. And I've highlighted a few areas in green where it shows the street roads, based if it's paved with concrete curb and gutters, storming sewers. And it shows about 9, 0.95. And the highest number would be 1, lowest number would be 0, basically, for the extremes. And for the gravel side, within the right of way, it's about 0.65 and 0.75. The reason why I kind of highlighted these two numbers is because within the project area specifically of Poplar Street, we have a soil group classification of B and C right in the middle. It's based off of, I believe, our stormwater master plan back in 2016. So that area kind of did a study of the hydrological soils that we have within the city. This next slide is also another representation as well of infiltration rates too, but this time using curve numbers as described in the SCS method. And this one was taken directly from Cow Tranch Drainage Design Manual as well. And there's a couple of areas where it says typical land uses. And it's kind of perfect, almost perfect for our project in a sense where under the impervious side, it says paved parking and under the disturbed transitional side, it says gravel parking. And you could kind of see, again, the higher the number is, the more impervious it is. So impervious surface being 98, in classifications B and C. And then under the gravel parking with that compact base material underneath, doesn't offer as much, it offers a little bit more permeability, but it's not as effective. So we wanted to, again, kind of summarize and bring forth kind of reasons to why we're asking for this amendment and we're just solely based on focusing on the paved parking lanes in place of the previous approved gravel parking lanes. And again, between Main Street and Highway 1, and want to emphasize that we don't propose any changes between Highway 1 to Railroad Avenue. Thank you very much for listening through all my stuttering, so I appreciate it. And I'm happy to attempt to answer any questions.
I didn't actually catch any stuttering, but I'm sure we'll have some clarifying questions. Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it. And I'm going to open it up for public comment before we go to planning commissioners for clarifying questions. I have one member of the audience who has submitted a green card, Jimmy Benjamin, if you would, please.
Thank you, Chair Hernandez. I'm still Jimmy Benjamin, same address. So I chaired the meeting where this got its Planning Commission approval. That was a pretty fiery interaction that evening. And I just wanted to recall for those of you who were not on the Planning Commission at the time or who were recused at the time, that the, the issue was a nexus with the quality of the experience of walking down Poplar from Main Street all the way to the beach and a recognition of what you saw earlier tonight, which is that the business as usual process for handling the flows of water in our community are not getting it done. And this is the crux of the reason that we want more permeable services. I understand that the handbook says that we could do with less. I think it's important for all of us, not just the engineering department, but all of us, to understand that the handbook is just a rough model and the applicability of any particular model to any particular real-life situation. That's, that's a judgment call. That's not because the handbook says you can do it. And if we look at business as usual, the way we've been doing it, we're getting erosion, we're getting serious water problems. The idea that we should be hesitant because the water could secrete in and we could have failure from the loss of substrate actually raises a different issue. That says to me that there's some kind of piping of the soil. That's not an issue with what kind of structure you use. That says that there's a pocket that you're losing soil somehow, if it's going to the sewer or if it's going someplace else. That's a separate and real concern, but that's not a reason to replace, replace a pervious surface with an impervious surface. I also question whether the funding mechanisms that were in place that would allow a lower-cost alternative on the east side of the highway would not have ramifications for an equal protection under the law argument for the folks who live on the west side of the highway. So although we may feel that they could be disconnected, I think there's a real possibility that they would not be. So I appreciate the potential hazard. Many of our neighborhoods have no sidewalks at all. Many of our neighborhoods have been built for decades and they have had gravel rather than paved roads. And everybody's okay. So I feel like the safety concern may be overwrought, especially since there are good paths on the other side. And if you really felt that strongly that this was a hazard, that somebody was waiting to break an ankle, you could use decomposed granite. That's in the scope of the existing permit. I encourage you to leave the permit as it is. And I thank you for bringing the issue up so we have an opportunity to discuss it when cooler heads prevail. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see a green card from any other members of the public, but I do see a member of the public who has raised your hand, so I'll ask her... Could you pull the microphone closer to you? It's okay.
My name's Lee Argabright and I live on Poplar Street. And I have a couple of questions. I understood from the plans from April 24th for the coast side water district, they mapped out which water meter, you know, water boxes would remain where they are and which ones would be moved and so on. And I understood that the ones for my duplex would have, would stay where they were. And I even built a fence around it as a courtesy to the water, you know, and all that, and just be have the lids leveled. But I learned today that now they want to move the whole, the water meters inside my fence. And I want to know what changed between April and now as far as the coast side water district with the infrastructure they put in. Because this is sort of like, hmm, and they're ready to do it. And I'm like, ah. So I went through all the plans again. I cannot find an update myself from the April plans.
We don't normally engage in a back and forth, but if you have other comments, we'll take them now and I'll make sure, we'll ask city staff to look into this.
And to their credit, they are taking that black roadie material out of the beds for me, you know, that cut straight in there. Also, I put a lot of money and time and effort into building a succulent garden with the proper drainage rock and then the sand and then the this and then, you know, decorative rock and then bolt and then the whole bit. And built it to what I thought was the edge of my property line. It turns out it's not, I guess. And that was one of the questions with where the water meters are. I guess there might be a different calculation now as far as where the monument markers are than there were in April. But leaving that aside, I really tried to do the right thing as far as having a great place for the water to sink down and settle in. And when I did put sprinklers in, they either drip or very, very low and so on. With all due respect, I do find though, the potholes in front of my property, oh my goodness. And when it, when it rains a lot, we're stepping out into puddles. And then when the rocks fly, they nick the road some more. I mean, it's just a mess. So if, if we do have to do fresh gravel or granite or whatever, if it can have really firm curbs around it, and for those of us who are concerned about liability, you know, with the ADA and so on, and my mother's 86, I'd like some proactive workshops on what we need to do to maintain it or who we hire to maintain it if we're, if we have to be abroad or if we get a corporate transfer somewhere else. Because I've never lived anywhere so litigious as California and I am glad to be back in my own state. However, I can see with the different levels and if gravel gets compacted here and not so much there and so on, it could be really, it could be really a tripping hazard, even for me, but certainly for visitors and other people visiting. The other thing I wanted to ask is, I love this diagram you have with the tree detail. And that's how I put in my bigger aloe plants and so on. The tree in front that we lovingly put in, which is going to be right up to where the new fence might be, is about 12 feet tall now. It started like this. I was shown it filowely and it's this absolutely gorgeous aloe. It started like this, I was showing it fallowly, and it's just absolutely gorgeous aloe. And I want to know, since they're going to be careful putting in the new trees, how do we make sure that they do take care of the things that were planted and are there? Because it's easy to, you know, clear everything away and plant new, but I've really put a lot into the succulent garden. It's not like, you know, it's not like Palm Springs where you have, you know, the beautiful sand and then a rock. It's like, I've made it to be like an underwater coral garden. And I really don't want to. I, in fact, I only just realized today that, how long do I have to move my fences because they say demolish? My redwood fences, they say demolish. How long do I, you know? Anyways, you can tell me, but if, here's what question I'll leave you with. If the green that you would put in, if the green that I have there already is more lush than what you would be able to put in anyway, can you just keep the sidewalk going straight across the way it is, would be now? That's what I want you to look at because for those of us who have really, really put the time and the effort and the money and all into making these bio retention, whatever, it's just heartbreaking to have it all, you know, destroyed. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. And I appreciate the dilemma you find yourself in. All right, we have some members of the public who have put their hand up. I'm going to go to Sarah Polgar, and then there was another member of the public who I will, if she still wants, I see their hand has gone down, but I'll open it up to Sarah Polgar.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sarah Polgar. I live on Poplar on the west side. And I also, I was the planning commissioner, like Jimmy, when this item came up and voted to approve the CDP that's up for amendment here. And I'm, I wanted, I actually submitted a pretty in-depth letter encouraging you not to make changes to the, make the, approve this amendment. And the key reason, I just wanted to summarize, the key reason that I wanted everybody to be aware of is something that wasn't brought up in the staff meeting, or staff report, excuse me, is that another big reason why the planning commission wanted to not have these areas paved was to maintain, to avoid the perception of a wider driving area. And that's feedback that that was based, there was a lot of discussion about this in public comment. There was also quite a bit of discussion with, amongst the planning commissioners. And the city heard this feedback extensively from the public and the community leading in the years prior to the the CDP consideration. You know, you can look at the, the October twenty nineteen survey results where traffic speed was the biggest issue consistently that people cited. And more than twenty people wrote in saying, don't widen Poplar because that will just increase the traffic speeds. And so I, I, I realized, yes, the drainage, and I appreciate very much Jimmy highlighting the importance of the, the reducing the amount of impervious surface. But I also want to highlight that the other key reason, and it was not reflected in the staff, staff report, was about safety. And it was about maintaining that perception. Literally, there's a quote in the meeting minutes from the February eighth meeting in twenty twenty-two that the commissioners, there was a, they liked that not having the, the road widened to keep that perception of narrower, to avoid the outcome of faster speeds. And so my point is that it was very intentional, that the condition was for non-paved parking areas to maintain that perception of a narrower road, avoid the project contributing to faster traffic speeds, which is contrary to the purpose of this project. It is a traffic calming and safety project. And so adding that, the paved areas back in, that's eight feet of paved area. And it goes almost, basically the entire way down because the driveways are also paved. So you have the, almost the entire way, you only have, the only disruptions to that are pretty, these small bump outs. And there's three on the south side and two on the north side. But that's it. That is just an expanse. And realistically, that's, that's like a thirty percent increase. The, the actual paved parking, driving area is only twenty-five feet. So another eight feet is more than thirty percent increase. It's, it's, it's a big safety issue, and I don't think that's addressed. I also, I do want to point out that I don't understand why this is just coming up now. Because I mean, there is an opportu, there's other sort, you know, things other than gravel, for instance, and that, that could have been considered. It's been a year and a half since the CDP was approved. And the project at this point has already been, the contract's been awarded to the contractor, construction contractor, the project's underway. So I just don't see, and it's also very frustrating that it's just now that suddenly this is coming up, whereas like clearly the, the things that were discussed as an issue, they're not new issues. So that's also very frustrating. And so I just, I wanted to come, you know, I wrote that letter, I hopefully you had a chance to, to read it, but I wanted to summarize these kind of my, what I recalled and what I saw in the meeting minutes, which I also thought should have been provided to the commissioners and the public along with this meeting, the item. So I just think that we don't want to do this, especially along that part of the street. The east side is have, there's, you know, families have small children, that it's a primary bike and pedestrian route for schoolchildren and senior citizens. I just think that, I hear that maybe it's going to cost more. But frankly, that's, that's important, that's part, that's the purpose of this project is safety, and this was a big reason to not have these areas paved, to maintain the, the narrow width of the street or the perceived narrow width of the street to avoid increased traffic speeds. So, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We had another member of the public who had raised their hand, and they have, Robin Luera, if you still want to speak, I'll open it up for you, but you need to raise your hand with the tool. And if you don't, that's okay.
We had a couple of them actually, and they didn't.
Okay. If you're having technical issues, unfortunately, we don't have a chat through this Zoom for legal reasons. Please try to use what you have, but we will close public comment for now, and then we'll move back to clarifying questions for the commission. I'm going to start on the left side this time. Commissioner Joanna.
I think my, my questions can be the clarifying or discussion later, so I can wait.
Okay.
That's okay.
I have, thank you. So do we believe the cars are going to slow down when we widen the road?
I'm trying to understand your comment with respect, your question with respect to widening the road.
Yes. So will, will the cars drive slower?
But we're not widening the roadway.
Right. So I think what she's saying is that because the parking lanes are going to be paved, the, the visual impact would be as if the road is wider. And so I understand it's not the pavement.
Sorry if it wasn't clear, but yes, if, to me, it seems as though we're widening the road because we're changing the parking lane from gravel to asphalt.
We'd be widening our pavement section, but the roadway would still be the same width.
Okay, thank you. Will the residents be required to maintain the asphalt paving for the parking?
No, that is not a responsibility for the property owners. That would be a city maintenance responsibility for the parking lanes.
That's it for me, thank you.
Will residents be responsible for maintaining the DG path? Or if there is a DG path in front of their house?
That, that portion is part of the request for maintenance with respect to the DG path, especially around the drive, the driveway aprons. And that was one of the concessions that the planning commission at the original approval made was that they would allow for those sections to be concrete, to be a impervious pavement.
For the driveways.
Just for the driveway segments.
But the, so the public won't have to maintain the?
So they wouldn't have to maintain it, but if they would keep the DG, then, then yes, they would, they would be required to maintain just that portion in front of the driveway.
In front of the, that connects to the driveway?
Correct.
Okay. And is there like a measured amount of space in front of the driveway? Is it two inches? Is it two feet? Is it the whole front of their house?
It would be the width of the DG path, so that would be six feet, would be the depth of it by the width of the driveway, so twenty-five feet or so.
Away from the, off of the driveway. I, I don't need to litigate it here. My question is, could you just make sure the owners know, if we do go down this path, can you make sure there's something in writing, people are aware of what their obligations are as we move forward? I don't want to have.
Absolutely. And I think that's part of a larger conversation with council because I know there's, you know, there's been some conversations about maintenance responsibilities for sidewalks and, and those public spaces outside of the street segment itself. And so we, we can, our stance has been to upgrade and bring it up to a, a good condition prior to transferring any of that responsibility. So that'll be something we'll have to go back to council to clarify. But yes, we will certainly, as far as this project with respect to the DG areas, we will have something more definitive with each of its owners.
You're adding trees, landscaping is part of the project. Who has obligation to maintain the, the trees?
We will have an establishment period where the contractor would maintain the trees, and then the city landscape contractor would take over maintenance responsibilities.
Will the owners of the house have responsibility for maintaining the trees? I think I just heard you say no.
That is not part of, yeah, that's not part of what we're requesting, although we would, it's, it's not, it's not a requirement that we're putting on any of the owners, but would obviously love to get any support we can from the residents.
I, I would love to, I mean, I know many people step forward to maintain the landscaping in this area, but we would love to see minimization of additional liability, especially since many people are paying for the improvements that are being made in front of their houses. So if the city's planting the trees, it would be great that we have a clear-cut maintenance policy established. What is the name of this project?
The Poplar Traffic Safety and Calming Project.
Okay. One of the, what is the number one concern that came from the public when you issued this survey? And if you don't know, I can tell you.
Vehicle or traffic and speeding.
Okay. What is the second most common method that the survey respondents used when moving up and down the street? And there were two hundred and thirty-four, I believe, respondents. What was the second most common method of moving up and down the street when they visit Poplar?
Walking, I believe.
Walking was number one. Number two is bikes.
Bikes.
What happened to the clear painted bike lanes? Is that still going to be part of the project or has that gone away?
With the, with the current configuration, we were unable to, to keep the class two bike lanes that we have, for example, on Main Street, on portions of Main Street that were recently constructed. So on this segment, we're looking at a class three bike route. So it'd be markings and share the road.
So green paint? And would that be an example of what would be there or would?
Yeah, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be designated as a lane itself. It would be kind of part of the road, road surface itself. So we can, I've seen it done different ways. You can either just put the bike symbol on the pavement itself. I've seen them do it on, we can also do a green square to bring more prominence to it, and then same, put that same bike symbol on it, but it wouldn't be a separate path from the vehicle.
Share the road, but you're going to mark it out clearly?
Yes.
So you're both engineers, professional engineers as well. So I think it's really difficult for me to sit here having listened to neighbors talk about flooding for quite a bit of time and sat through many of the things that we've seen and ask for us to put more pervious surfaces in place. Now I'm moving this to discussion at this point.
I was going to bring it when you finished.
Oh, she's back.
She keeps, yeah.
I'll, I'll pause my transition to like discussion, and we'll open it back up for public comment for Robin Luera.
I have been living on Poplar Street for fifteen years. I have been here through the struggle of running across Highway One to get to Cameron's. I think, when I first moved here, Poplar was beautiful. We had the London trees, we had the balsam fris, and it was gorgeous. And I fell in love with everyone who lived on the street. And now I am here, listening to a council who wants to rip us apart. And I, it hurts because I want to buy a house here. And I love the trees and the environment, and I don't like you much. And I don't think our street likes you much, pretty much. And I don't want you to respond because I want to keep going.
I'm going to ask you to refrain from any more ad hominem attacks on us, but I will allow you to continue, please.
But I would like you to respect the history of our street and stop ripping down our trees and our, I breathe in, I breathe out, whatever, just respect Poplar. We're not just a main street you go through. We are a, a community who has been here for a very long time. I, I actually loved when you put in the streetlights at Poplar across Highway One because I used to have to like skirt across the street blankly doing things. So I like that safety. I like the safety. But the safety right now is overwhelming. We're like, I feel like we're overwhelmingly trying to check boxes and we're ruining our community as we do it. So be wary as members of the community who owns Half Moon Bay, that you are not only checking boxes, but aware of the people who have been here for a very long time. That's it. That's all I want. Goodbye.
Thank you. Okay. Wow, that was a bit of interesting comments from many different people. I've also lived here fifteen years, and I'm on the other side of Poplar. I think one of my neighbors is just, just off of Poplar is also here. I've played Frogger before the light was installed. I helped the city prioritize reprogramming the light so that the pedestrian crosswalk timing worked, and I helped put in some crosswalks. I've also almost been creamed multiple times at that intersection by my neighbors. I don't think it was intentional, but it could be. And by visitors from out of town. It's a very dangerous intersection, and I feel very lucky having walked up and down that street for nine years with my kids going to school on the other side of Poplar, that one of them's in college and one of them will be soon. So we feel very lucky that we made it through. The neighborhood, the larger neighborhood is concerned about safety. I do think there is the secondary concern, especially on the east side of Poplar's, you know, there's the five or six London trees that are up there, which I think the last speaker speaks about. A member of my household says, can't they just keep the trees? I know they're supposedly end of life. I did take a photo and they're looking very good right now, but all trees die, we get that, and you probably don't want to build an engineering project around a tree that doesn't have more than a couple of years left. I get that. But I do think the general sentiment is, we want to maintain the natural feeling on the street as much as possible. And I think sometimes when we over-engineer for safety... And I think sometimes when we over-engineer for safety in one dimension, we may miss not just the greening side of things, but we may create other problems. So we're making wider sidewalks. We're making it safer to park. We're over-engineering for trip and fall. But the neighbors didn't ask for more parking. They didn't ask to take care of the cars overwhelmingly. They said, slow the traffic down. Don't make it so wide. Have more build-outs, bulbs, if you will, than fewer. And if somebody kicks up gravel and their car gets scratched because they're going too fast, well, that's, that's, I don't think anybody imagined that use case for any of the public meetings I sat through. I, I do under, I'm not, I do think you have a legitimate issue. I just think it's less of a priority from the other feedback I've heard from the many people who've had to endure safety issues on that street and walk in the mud when potholes on the side of the road because you're worried about somebody running you over. So I do think that that's important. Any other discussion points? Please.
Hey, I'm sorry, but I have no interest in approving this amendment. And I understand how you got here. When we talked about it a year and a half ago, you know, it was a, it was a project, a long project. And we were trying to match the, the character of both sides. We were trying to have this path be contiguous so that, you know, it would be attractive on both sides. And I understand that when city council decided to do Phase One, Phase Two, and you took all the money from the project and put it in Phase One, like if we were just looking at that piece newly, you know, just right there, I could see that you might want to like pave the whole thing. But that's not what we talked about. That's not what the plan was. It's not, it doesn't fit with the, the, the overall sense of what we approved a year and a half ago. It just doesn't. So I do, you know, I get the, there's kind of like the smell that it's all about. But it's cheaper to do it. It's quicker. It's more convenient. But that's not why we're doing this. So I'm sorry, but I'm, that's really not going over this one. Thank you.
Chair, oh, I just wanted to say, Chair, I just don't know if we closed public comment. And also, we have someone who had raised her hand earlier that didn't speak up.
Well, since public comment is still open, I will call on Evelyn De Souza and invite any other members of the public for one last call for public comment. Please.
Thanks, Rick. This is Evelyn. Just a quick comment on the London plain trees. I noted that you said earlier that they might be end of life. My understanding is that the trees are coming down not because they're end of life, but because they're in the way of the curb and the gutters. And that makes sense to me. I'm not objecting to that, but just wanted to make sure that it wasn't because there was a perception that the trees were end of life. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, you know, per Robin's point earlier, we do, will lack some mature greenery on the street because three trees did come down in storms earlier this year. So just a comment and, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to close public comment this time. See, don't give me a gavel. I don't know what to do. All right. I'm going to turn it over to you, Commissioner Joannis.
So I really don't understand why we're here right now with this amendment. I don't understand. I, I don't understand what has changed since the last planning commission approved the CDP. And now, I mean, it seems mysterious to me that the city staff, as knowledgeable as you guys are, would not have known of this issue as far as the safety and the compaction at that time. Likewise, I don't understand, in September, September 5th, when you, when this item went to city council for approving and accepting the contract and awarding the contract, this wouldn't have come up then to ask if this, the council, if this should have been changed as far as awarding the contract. Maybe you would have saved some money in awarding the contract. I know you had a contingency amount in that contract. So the city approved a certain amount and a contingency of $200,000. And at that same meeting, the city council also adopted a cost-share formula for residents along Poplar. So I don't understand why we're here today. I don't understand why this would come up suddenly. This is safe, this type of a safety issue, type of design constraint, all would have been something engineers would have done a long time ago and brought up a long time ago. So that, that's one comment. I don't understand also whether there's equity between the east side and west side now if, for some reason, we were to say, go ahead with this amendment. So what is the equity analysis there? I, I don't understand. The question I also don't have an answer for, you know, we awarded this contract based on certain criteria. The certain project went out to bid. You had several bidders. I looked at the bidders list. They're, you know, the bid items have, you know, paving on there. What if a contractor had a different method of construction and would have come up with a different rate or different final costs or bid rates based on the construction methodology? Would other, now, is this equitable to the other contractors that didn't win the lowest bid? I mean, is they, are we now in a position, if we were to approve this, create a, an avenue for contractors after the fact protesting? I, I don't know the answer. And so again, these are some of the things that I don't understand why we're here today. What happens if we do pave and the bioswells reach its capacity with these El Nino storms coming up? And we're paving and, and the biosails don't have enough carrying capacity or a capacity to have the water settle in there? Where does that water go? Does it go across the highway? You know, I, it's, these are just things that, nothing's adding up to me as to why we're here today. So it's difficult for me to understand. Another part of this is why are we bifurcating a CDP east versus that west? Because it seems to me that the same arguments that you're presenting today would apply to the west side. I mean, safety is safety. If you're saying this is safety issues and money issues, it applies to the west side. So when can we expect this to come up for the west side? And say that, okay, let's just throw away all the amendments or come up with the, you know, recalling this a major amendment? Do we have now a super-major amendment coming up later on? So again, it's this confusion that I have.
Yeah, just since we're on discussion, there was a pretty extensive water study done during the original project. And there was another project on the corner of Poplar and Highway One, the greenhouse, where they did extensive water mitigation and they worked with the city to make improvements. So yeah, the water is going to roll downhill. So if you have more impervious surfaces, it's, it's not going to roll over the top of Highway One. There's a conduit under the Highway One that takes it there. And I do think that, in fairness to the city, on one point, the project's been split. So I think the safety issues that may be raised or other things will come when the second part of the project comes before us. And I don't know if that'll be a separate CDP altogether or how the city's going to approach it, but I imagine, we've already approved a project. I think it's just, I guess the question, the clarifying question I would ask is, when there's a second part, are we expecting to see a new CDP? Or does the old CDP cover part two? And I don't know if you have an answer for that now.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm happy to respond to some of the comments I've heard and, and whatnot. I don't know if there's any other discussion items you guys want to have or-
Why don't we work through it? And then you can, if you're taking all of your questions, we'll just let you hit it all at one time.
Perfect.
All right. Commissioner Goss, Commissioner Reddick?
Thank you. My recollection of the deliberations on this a year and a half ago is that there was extremely clear input from the public in favor of traffic calming, slowing down speeders and increasing the safety on that segment of Poplar. I, I have to, with all due respect, push back a little bit on the fears about gravel being sprayed along there. I think the gravel is obviously superior for the impervious nature of it, as we've discussed a lot tonight. I'm, I'm quite familiar in my neighborhood and other parts of town with undeveloped parking areas and shoulders. And, you know, occasionally I do see when the, when the garbage and recycling trucks pull onto the gravel that on Thursday morning, you'll see a handful of gravel in the street after that. But it, it's certainly not catastrophic. And I, I would not be in favor of throwing out our focus on traffic calming and safety in, in favor of some, somewhat vague fears about, about gravel. I, I also think that as former Commissioner Polger very articulately asked, if you thought there were merit in other softscapes, then, I know it's late in the game to be thinking about it, but, but I think reasonable people might have been open-minded to that. But no, I, I won't, I won't vote for, for this amendment.
One thing I want to point out on North Seymour, I know this is not the project, but they have paved parking and it's completely rutted on the south side of the street. I was walking there today. In fact, the ruts are filled with puddles due to the rain. So I'm, I also agree with my fellow commissioners. I don't see the utility of switching from gravel to paving for that reason, for the, for the maintenance reasons. And I'm very concerned about public safety with the perception that the road is being widened. I listened to both the meetings and the, between December, the December meeting and the February meeting, the commission spent seven hours talking about this. And the theme through that meeting was public safety, keeping the, not increasing the pervious square footage to protect properties from flooding, from erosion, from silt transport. So I'm, I'm in agreement with my fellow commissioners. I really care about the public safety and can't support this amendment respectfully.
Commissioner Joannis?
So I'd, I'd like to understand, if we were to not support this amendment, what happens next?
My understanding is the project is already approved. It's just they can't change it and they can't use more pervious surfaces.
I, yeah, I can, I can touch on that a little bit if, if this is an appropriate time.
Why don't you go ahead and, and I'll just say, can you just use smaller rocks or DG in the parking? I'll just-
No, so yeah, I think, you know, I appreciate the community and the commission for listening to this, to this request. We, we were looking at it from a number of different perspectives. And yes, I agree, there's, you know, many different things that could have been done or, or looked at. Having said that, we, we did have some concerns and we were on the fence about whether this was something we wanted to bring up or not. But we decided that it would be better to have the conversation and just kind of put it out there, regardless of, you know, what, what, you know, just kind of going and talking this, this issue through. And so what I would, you know, what I would say is, you know, there's a number of comments that we heard and I just want to go through that a little bit. We heard about the infrastructure with regards to the Coastside County Water District, with regards to their infrastructure. Yes, they are, they prefer, I think the preference is to put those meters outside of sidewalks and, and DG pathways from a perspective of tripping, tripping hazards.
I, I'm sorry, so could, could you just, so-
There was a, yeah, there was a comment. So I'm just going to go through some of the things that I've heard.
And then, and that particular one, at some point, could you follow up with Ms. Argabright directly?
Yes, absolutely. We're, I think we can meet on site and go through that, you know, like we've been doing with other residents. We're happy to go on site and meet with them one-on-one to see how we can preserve some of that space where we can.
Thank you.
Absolutely. With respect to the Coastside County Water District and the meter locations, that was really a, that was a, that was a district priority. That was something that they chose to do. It was not something that was dictated by the city. So that really was part of their infrastructure upgrade plan. And I know that there's other cases where they have to, they have done those relocations outside the public right-of-way. It's easier for access for residents and contractors. You know, you don't have to dig up sidewalk or DG in a public right-of-way. So that was something that was really the district that was pushing forward with. And I understand there was some confusion with the property lines. I think, you know, having the street, having the street in the configuration for as long as it has been, I mean, obviously there is a little bit of, it's hard to see where those lines are with respect to where the private property is and where the public right-of-way is. And so we, you know, we, we will be cognizant of that. And again, we will reach out to Ms. Albright as well as anybody else that's still interested to talk to us about ways that we can work and preserve some of the infrastructure and the plantings that they have on, in front, in their front yards. We, as far as the long term, I think, you know, we talked a little bit about what our concerns were with respect to some safety concerns and some maintenance long-term. But, you know, obviously, we, we hear, we hear the comments clearly. We hear them loudly. And so if, you know, as my, as the applicant, as the city engineer, I would actually request to withdraw this application before you tonight. Okay. And, and what that would do is, you know, we would, the existing CDP that we have for the east side and west side for the entire thing, that's what we have. We will move forward with the construction on Phase One. And then the CDP that we have for the west side will remain as is. And we will program that in our CIP and look for funding sources. And hopefully, we can get that rest of this segment completed in the near future as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. I will say, I don't think I could be more, anyone could be more excited than I am to finally see this project see light of day. And I know it has been a long grind. And I know my portion of payment for the west side will be coming due. And even with that, I'm still excited about this project because I think it will improve the walkability of our neighborhood, the safety of our neighborhood. And for those of you who worry about the short-term costs, the walkability drives up the value of your house. It's a really nice Zillow score. So I'm going to ask for a motion. You're withdrawing it altogether? So no motion whatsoever? Okay. Then I'm going to close this item.
Thank you.
Okay. Planning Commission business or Director's business? We've got the director came back.
I've been typing away. Thank you. Good to see you all tonight. And I just want to thank Doug for sitting in for me. You're going to see Doug more here. And thank our city engineer for, especially that storm water management presentation. It was really informative. All of the planners are going to review it and participate with them. In brief, your next meeting is November fourteenth. We have a, our favorite thing, which is a fifth Tuesday this month. So that gives us just like a breathing room between packets. So we don't have everything queued up. We will have an appeal before you on 225 Valdez. It was, I think, last week or, no, two weeks ago, I guess, the Architectural Advisory Committee took their first look at the Cabrillo Unified School District's proposal for the Hatch School Site. It's a sixty-unit proposal. We're watching as they continue to conduct public engagement. And we would like to get them before you for some kind of study session at some point. So we'll keep you posted.
I would love a study session on this project.
There you go. I will let our housing coordinator know how much he would enjoy that. So that's great. I will let our housing coordinator know how much he would enjoy that, so that's great.
There's a lot of very, very vocal feedback on Nextdoor, so a study session might be a really good opportunity for the public to participate with us helping.
Excellent. I think that's perfect. Steph actually has the same opinion and we appreciate the Planning Commission's forum for these kinds of things. The streetscape design phase has been going on this week. I don't know if any of you have been able to pop into it. They were in the library today and then they had a presentation tonight. It overlapped your meeting a little bit. It was at 6:00. I got to see some of their on-the-fly design work in Charette form and it's really beautiful. It's exciting. They're bringing lots of choices. It's a process that kind of widens before it narrows. So, we want to make sure that everyone understands there's room to participate and follow it. Yes.
Did they record that meeting tonight?
I don't know.
So that we could see it?
Oh, we can check with our project manager. It's harder for us when we're not in our little environment here.
Okay.
Yeah. Very good. I don't have a lot more tonight. We have been really busy with quite a few sort of challenging projects and following up with all those emergency permits takes time that you're not seeing and things like that. So, we will keep you updated as things come forward. Bridgette can give you a more detailed agenda forecast in a week or so and thank you for tonight.
Thank you, Jill. Just one note. The meeting is on the 14th of November? I thought I heard the 15th, but it's the Tuesday, the 14th of November? Got it. Okay. Very good. I might be traveling that day, so I might need to dial in remotely. I will try to participate remotely. I'll get my details to Bridgette. Are there any Planning Commissioner communications? I just want to say thank you to city staff for the stormwater presentation again and I know you're working hard to take our feedback and address the concerns of the neighbors. And I don't take the work you have to do lightly and I know you don't take it lightly either. So, thank you. With that, can I get a motion?
Motion, please, sir.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.